Good evening. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a very smooth opening of school this year. We are grateful for the positive attitudes of our students, our parents, and employees, and we ask your blessings upon each as we work together to make this a great school year. Please protect us and our neighbors this week as Hurricane Laura approaches our coast, and be with us tonight as we make decisions for the children we serve, and help us to remember that their needs always come first. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Jackson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I would lead it.
To the republic for which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Ms. Votet.
Ms. Acevedo.
Here.
Mr. Campbell is not with us. Mr. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Slamoin.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Ms. Isart.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith is not with us. Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Votet. Yes, before we go on to the regular agenda, Mr. England, we have.
Upon the privilege, please. Thank you, Ms. Isart. I'd like to take a moment of silence for a couple of employees that passed away just recently. We had an assistant principal at Andrew Jackson. She was here for many years. Lynette King Ladner Zuley, she passed away. And also a bus driver who had over 20 years, there's Gerald Poncetti. He passed away also. So if we could just have a moment for silence, but this Ladner, she's, I went to school with her. You know, suppose I go see her. She's a fine lady, and JT, her husband, was a fine gentleman. So our hearts and prayers go out to those families. Thank you.
And at this time, unfortunately, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence also. Ms. Polly Renshaw has passed, and if any of you know Ms. Renshaw, she was just a heart of gold, and she loved children, she loved education. She taught many years as an English teacher. She was also a supervisor, then assistant superintendent. And I know, I don't know how many years total she had with us, but it had to be over 40. And we're deeply saddened by her loss also. So if you would keep the Renshaw family, and your thoughts and prayers, and our hearts go out to the Renshaw family for Ms. Polly Renshaw. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Ms. Votet.
And, you know, these three people were a very important part of our school system. You know, the bus driver, Mr. Poncetti, was, for over 20 years, did a remarkable job with our kids. I mean, Ms. Ladner, as the assistant principal of Andrew Jackson, was just, just a gem. I mean, she, she was a wonderful administrator, a wonderful teacher, gave a lot to the school system. She and her husband both worked within St. Bernard Parish Public Schools. And then later on, after she retired, she moved to Mississippi, and I think she was a principal at a school in Mississippi. So it was in, in her blood. Ms. Renshaw, I can't say enough about Ms. Renshaw. When I moved into the central office, she was so warm and welcoming. She was truly a great lady, tremendous educator. And I think Wayne Warner said it best this morning when we heard it, you know, just, she loved people who loved kids, is what he said. And one of the most generous people that you could ever come across. So it's a tremendous, I think, loss to our school system because they all kept in touch and wanted to know how things were going with the kids. And we would periodically talk with them and keep them abreast. So these were wonderful people who contributed many years of their lives and their passion to the students here in St. Bernard Parish. So they're truly going to be missed.
Mr. Long.
Also, on a personal note, with Ms. Renshaw, many years ago, I had to make a speech as chairman of Safety Committee at Murphy Oil. And I didn't know what to say to this group of about 800 people. So I went to Ms. Renshaw and asked her to help me write a speech. And she did, and it went over so, so great that the president of Murphy Oil, Mr. Murphy, came up to me and said, "You did a great job, you know. Thank you for your comments." So, but she, you're right, she was a special, special lady. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Long. All righty. Next item on the agenda is a motion to incorporate the report of the General Committee meeting into the minutes of the August regular monthly meeting.
So move.
This is motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Lamoin. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item are the personnel changes and those that are highlighted or the new ones since the committee meeting. Give you a minute to look at those. Any questions? Okay. And we do not take action on this item. It's just for information. All righty. Next item on the agenda is a motion to adopt the new or changed policies recommended by the committee, and they are: II, which is the testing program; EBBD, emergency closing of schools; GAE, non-title, non-title nine, complaints, grievances; GAA, equal opportunity employment; JAA, title, non-sexual harassment; JCEA, sexually related student misconduct; GAMC, investigations; GAA, titled seven, employee sexual harassment; and JD, discipline. Is there a motion on the floor at this time? Okay, there's a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? And we did discuss these at the committee meeting. There being no discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, next item is the adoption of the 2020 Advilorum millages. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So move.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Warner. I think this was read in the minutes of the committee meeting. Should we read it again? Since this is.
Why don't we do that, just?
Yeah. To be.
Because there are strict timelines about this, and then we can do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Fernandez, did you want to come up? Did you have anything, do you have anything, would you come up to the podium, please? Putting you on the spot again. Do you want to explain again the reason for this, Mr. Fernandez, please?
Okay, every year, the board adopts their Advilorum millages to be applied to property values in the parish at the end of the year when the property bills are sent out. This year is a reassessment year. Every four years, the state of Louisiana requires reassessment of all properties in every parish. And then the millages are adjusted either upwards or downwards to a revenue-neutral level, so that you're earning the same, or you're generating the same amount of revenues as you had the previous year. When the reassessment was done in St. Bernard Parish this year, the total property, the taxable property values decreased slightly. So our reasses, our adjusted millage rates have increased slightly from 41.22 mills to 42.11 mills. So since they are adjusted automatically upward to the adjusted rate, there's no need for a roll forward, or we can't roll forward. It's automatically roll forward if y'all adopt this millage. So this is just a normal process of, for what adopting its millages to be applied, be applied to the property values. And it does require a voice vote when you take your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Anyone else? Any questions or statements? Okay, I'll read the resolution into the minutes. Be it resolved that the following millages are hereby levied on the 2020 tax row on all properties subject to taxation by the St. Bernard Parish School Board. School district constitutional millage is 3.91. School district operational, 9.64 mills. School district operational, 3.13 mills. School district operational, 19.81 mills. School district maintenance, 5.62 mills. Be it further resolved that the proper administrative officials of the parish of St. Bernard, state of Louisiana, be and they are hereby empowered, authorized, and directed to spread said taxes as herein above set forth upon the assessment roll of said parish for the year 2020, and to make the collection of taxes imposed for and on behalf of the taxing authority according to law, and that the taxes herein levied shall become a permanent lien and privilege on all properties subject to taxation as herein set forth, and collection thereof shall be enforceable in the manner provided by law. The foregoing resolution was read in full. The rule was called on the adoption thereof, and the resolution will be adopted by the following votes. And then to certify it, hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and exact copy of the resolution adopted at the board meeting held on August 25th, at which meeting a quorum present and voting. St. Bernard Parish School Board, Parish of St. Bernard, Louisiana, this 25th day of August 2020. Roll call vote, please, on this item.
Ms. Acevedo. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Campbell is not with us. Mr. Egan.
Four.
Ms. Jackson. Ms. Lamoin.
Four.
Mr. England.
Four.
Ms. Isart.
Four.
Mr. Long.
Four.
Mr. Smith is not with us. Mr. Warner.
Four.
And Ms. White.
Four.
Okay, motion nine, four, and two absences.
Thank you, Ms. Votet. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Okay, next item is a motion to approve the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So move.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda are items to be placed on the agenda of the next committee meeting. Does anyone have any at this time? Okay, and we always have until the committee meeting to place items on the agenda. Okay, next item, superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Votet.
Just a couple of updates. Mr. Warner had asked about the construction projects we had going. The overhang outside the Ninth Grade Academy has been completed, and they're very thankful that that has gotten done prior to the students arriving this year. The roof on the Trist Gym, the, it has been, the main part of it has been completed. The gym is able to be utilized. And the finishing touches on the roofing itself are being done as we speak. So it's very shortly will be completed. The property adjacent to Lacoste that we were developing as an additional green space for Lacoste was a lot that we had taken over from parish government. And the fencing has been put around. The sod has been laid. I was talking with Ms. Jackson earlier, and she has actually seen it. So the railings have been put up and the basketball goals, and it's just about completed and usable for our students. So we're in good shape on those three projects that we were doing this summer, even with the rain that came in the last few weeks, and of course, then the situation this past week. But school was off to a good start, as we said in the opening. We've got a little over 30% of our students completely virtually learning, and that started last Monday on the 17th. And our students in-person learning started on the 11th. As we all know, the last couple of days, we've been out of school because of Marco. But we are resuming school tomorrow and keeping a close watch on Hurricane Laura. But in talking with the local and state OEP officials and our parish government officials, we feel that it's safe to resume school tomorrow. We'll keep a close watch. If anything develops later on in the day that would impact Thursday, then we'll make adjustments at that time. But school will be open tomorrow. Mr. Dewey has gone through all of our buildings today, he and his crew, to make sure that all the storm preparations, he has kind of undid them, you know, make him ready for the kids to arrive tomorrow. We don't have any issues whatsoever, and the buildings are fine and ready for occupancy tomorrow. We all know that this is a very emotional week for the community with the 15th anniversary of Hurricane Katrina Saturday. Usually, we have our Day of Reflection Breakfast, which we could not have this year because of the restrictions on people gathering. We're going to be doing just a short presentation on, in fact, over the course of the year. We're going to be doing something a little bit different this year. It's going to be called something like 15 and 15. So 15-minute segments each month as the year progresses. So at the end of this week, for Hurricane Katrina, we're going to do a little 15-minute presentation and do some highlights of our past 14 breakfasts, Day of Reflection breakfasts, to show. And then, over the course of the year, we're going to be highlighting different parts of the school system. We'll be looking at the school board as one in terms of leadership and policies. We'll do something on that. We're going to do a program on our buildings, a program on our programs that we're offering to the kids, on our school leaders, and different aspects of the school system. And we'll be doing that on a monthly basis, each month, to showcase our kids, our programs, our buildings, and our communities. We'll do something on our partnerships as well. So instead of focusing on that one-day event, we're going to look at it as a year-long event with much, like, smaller segments on a month-to-month basis. Okay?
And those segments, Ms. Votet, those segments will air on our, on Penn TV?
Yes, it'll air on Penn TV. And they're putting together the first one now, which will be a review and a look back at the past 14 years into this 15th anniversary. And we'll do it in 15-minute segments. So it'll be, I think, snapshots of what has happened over the past 15 years throughout our school system from every different aspect. The rebuilding of the infrastructure, the rebuilding of our programs and what we offer, the partnerships that we've developed within the community and the different organizations, the actual school leaders that are within our organizations, and our school board and policies that, you know, y'all have developed, and the plans that have brought us to the point where we are today.
Sounds great. Thank you, Ms. Votet. All right. Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to give a shout-out and kudos to all of our school personnel. They are resilient, and they have been handling this, you know, epidemic COVID in the best way possible for our students. So a big thank you to the teachers, our staff members, the support staff, our bus drivers, our cafeteria ladies, and all who work for the system. Of course, our superintendent, assistant superintendent, and all of our central office workers. You know, the schools, for what we've been handed, are doing very well. And the students have really gotten the hang of it, and they're doing great, you know, with the mask and washing all the time, and, you know. So they're, now, a big shout-out to everyone in the school system for making the best of the situation. We really appreciate everyone cooperating. Thank you.
And may I say something else, Ms. Isart? I've been asked this before, and I really just want to say this publicly, in terms of notification to the public, if we have positive COVID cases within our schools. And we all know that as COVID exists within the community, then they, it will be brought into the school system. It's not if, it's going to be when, and on different campuses for different reasons. We've already had at three of our sites, positive cases. We have notified every family in the school when we have had them. And then we have worked with the Department, Louisiana Department of Health, in determining what are called close contacts. The people who are interviewed in terms of who has been within six feet for more than 15 minutes at a time, that is defined as a close contact by the CDC and the Department of Health. So anyone who is designated a close contact is notified, and those individuals have to quarantine for a 14-day period. So we notify them, whether it be a teacher or a student, maybe a, maybe one of their family members, and then they have to close, they have to quarantine for a 14-day period. If it is a student that we become aware of, who has tested positive, then we determine if there were any close contacts with that particular student, and those people are notified and quarantined, and all the information is run through the Louisiana Department of Health. So I want people to understand that those notifications are being sent out. And if the notification is sent out, we can't identify the individual because we all know that is a confidential medical situation. But we can notify the families that there is or was a positive case of a person who either works at or a student who attends school. I would like to caution everyone out there, if you are the parent of a teenager especially. It seems like, you know, teenagers are very social beings, especially at that point in their lives, and they tend to congregate. We've had situations of a youth group at one of the churches that three of the students tested positive. So from meetings within that particular group where masks were not worn or possible procedures not followed. We also had a situation, and I'll just say it publicly, you know, a cheerleading squad that had parties over the weekend. And one child tested positive, so the entire squad would be quarantined for 14 days in terms of not being allowed, you know, to, to attend. They need to be considered close contacts and be in a quarantine situation for 14 days. So I know how hard it is. We're hearing cases throughout the country on college campuses where we're seeing, at that point, you know, in your lives and you go away to college, that's one of the big things that you do. Go to the social gatherings, have parties. But in this particular time, that's where you're going to see a lot of spread of this particular virus. So we would ask especially our teenagers in the parish to be very cognizant of that and to be responsible, and to try to curtail some of those social activities until we are in a better place in our state, our country, and really in the world in terms of finding either a vaccine or a treatment for this particular virus. But I want to echo, Ms. Isart, our employees, you know, our teachers, our support staff have been absolutely wonderful. The kids, I'm impressed when you go through the buildings. They're all wearing the masks. They're all practicing the social distancing. And I think they're getting used to the situation as it exists right now. So we need to continue that and not become complacent at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Votet. Mr. England?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Isart. Ms. Votet, what about Ochsner Hospital? How do you work in conjunction with our school system?
Yes, Ochsner Hospital has been working with us. We have an agreement with them. They are advising us, the medical staff is advising us on, you know, any medical protocols we have to go through. Not only Ochsner Hospital, but at the high school and at Raleigh, we have an association with the Methodist Foundation through the school-based health clinic that we've had for years. They're also in an advisory capacity as well. And we have a direct line, the Office of Public Health. Dr. Joe Kanter is the medical director for this region, and he's also the assistant medical director for the state. And we are in direct contact with him and his staff. So we have three groups of medical professionals that we can access at any time of the day or evening. Now, part of the agreement we have with Ochsner is for our employees, if anyone is either, if they feel they're symptomatic, or we are able to have them tested immediately with results coming back immediately for the staff members, so that we don't have to wait several days to get those results. And that has, that has been a tremendous benefit, you know, for our employees and really for the educational process as a whole, because then we are knowledgeable then immediately if there is a situation concerning any of the adults in the school system. If there are children who are symptomatic, if we do the temperature checks every morning, if any child shows a slight fever or a persistent cough or difficulty breathing, whatever, we send them to a particular room in school, and a nurse is there to evaluate the situation. And then if that nurse feels that it is a symptom that needs to be further looked at, and a fever always is, then the information is given to the parent about what resources are available to them, and the child has to stay home, if it's one of those major symptoms, until he's either tested or until his doctor sends something back saying he is cleared to come back to school. So if a child looks symptomatic, we must have some evidence that it has been addressed, either through his personal physician or a negative test result.
Well, that's, that's what I brought up about the options. We're trying to do everything possible for the safety and the well-being of all our students, of personnel, of our school system. So until they get a vaccine, you know, that's always, you know. as long as we follow those guidelines.
And we're following the CDC guidelines and the guidelines that have been set up by the BESI Board, that's Louisiana Department of Education, in coordination with the Louisiana Department of Health. Those two entities have come together and established the guidelines for in-person learning for K-12 education. And we are following every one of those. And we took the further step, as you alluded to, Mr. England, of forming those medical partnerships with Ochsner. We already have one with the Methodist Foundation and now very directly with the Office of Public Health.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Lotte. Thank you, Ms. Isart.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, is there a motion adjourned? Motion by Ms. Acevedo, seconded by Ms. Jackson. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.